We're here with Dee Hunter and Chris Rideout from Leadership Paulding 29 to talk about their class project that was recently installed in Veterans Park. Dee, could you tell us a little about the project?
So Leadership Paulding classes are tasked each year with providing a service project to the citizens of Paulding County. Leadership Paulding 29 class, which is the best class ever, collaborated and decided to honor the sacrifice of Paulding County residents who have served in the armed forces. This year, we named our project Land of the Free and Home of the Brave.
Chris, could you tell us some details about the project?
Absolutely. Being a huge supporter of the military, I was really pumped about this project. So what the class did is we created life-size silhouettes that we've mounted to the back of the amphitheater. It's to a backdrop of the American flag. It's cut out of sheet metal. And it's even lighted at night, so passerby's can enjoy it as well as people that are enjoying the park during the day. The project could not have happened without generous donations from numerous businesses throughout Paulding County.
Well, it's a great addition to Veterans Park, and I want to say thank you to your class for all that you've done to make it happen.
It was our pleasure.
This time, I'll call the Paulding County Board of Commissioners work session for September 19th to order. And Brian, if you'll bring up the list, please. If you've still got your phone on, like I do, it'd be a good time to turn it off. It looks like we've got the Baptist over here and the Methodist over here today. Thank you. Mike, I'd love to have you come forward at this time. Thank you for being here and bringing us our invocation and leading us in the pledge. Stand if you're able.
Let's pray. Father God, I thank you so much that you provided for us another day. You've given us strength to be here, and we're grateful for that. And Lord, I pray that... And Lord, I pray that we would acknowledge before you that you are the beginning of all wisdom and all authority and all governance begins with you. Lord, I pray that you would give wisdom to those in this room, that your glory would be evident in this room, and that we would honor you with all that we do. In your name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you so much. I haven't been very good at invitations. It's Pastor Mike Parker from Pleasant Grove Baptist Church. And also, I didn't introduce Sheriff Gary Gullidge, so he might throw something at me right here. The minutes for the September 10th, 2019 work session are available and also the September 10th, 2019 board meeting minutes. You won't need to review those, take a look at them. Under announcements, as you know, we celebrated or we honored, we were aware again of the 9/11 incident and our highlights of the Patriots' Day out at the park are part of our positively Paulding this morning, so let's watch that together.[685.04][685.04](Music)
Thank y'all for coming out here today to our Patriots' Day memorial.
Eighteen years ago, some of the men and women here, as well as the fire department, police department in New York City, Port Authority, and many other first responders in public safety embarked on the country's largest rescue effort.[717.62][717.62](Bells ringing)
They asked if you knew exactly where you were on 9/11. I remember exactly where I was, sitting at a desk, talking to a customer as she was watching it on TV.
Ayy! Ready? Ayy! Ready? Ayy!
Being a United Airlines pilot and having lost two airplanes the day of 9/11, we, that hits close to home.
Eighteen years ago was one of the saddest days in United States history. We're today remembering the ones who gave their lives so their fellow Americans could live.
At some point today, spend some time with your family and friends. Let them know how much you love them and care about them.
This is an important day for the Paulding County Sheriff's Office because we do have a lot of people that did go to Iraq because of this act of violence. I want to thank everybody that came out today and we'll do this again next year.[783.04][783.04](Music)
Good job Jeff Harkins and your team. The planning commission meeting was scheduled for today at 2:00 PM, has been canceled. Do not have a quorum present, so that will be rescheduled. The four agenda items, make sure I got the right, got a couple of agendas here. Under invited guests, we have none. Bid awards discuss action to purchase the high-density shelving for the adult detention and law enforcement center to the low bidder, American Specialties, in the amount of $129,827.46. Ms. Pollard to present. Thank you.
Good morning. CPS reached out to three different vendors, even though American Specialties was on the state contract, just to get comparison pricing. And that state contract pricing was the low bid pricing with American Specialties, and so we're recommending award for the high-density shelving for the new detention center. And CPS is here if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Reports from committees and departments, we're very pleased to have Ms. Deidra Holden, the election supervisor, to give us an update on just general election reports. Thank you, Deidra.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Bear with me till I get myself together. I want to be brief, I want to be respectful of your time. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to come talk to you all about things that are going on right now with elections. We are in the midst of it. We will be going into our November municipal election, plus we have a county-wide special election for the East West. I want to talk to you today about two things, which is changing of some polling locations and also our new voting system. We have approximately just over 118,000 voters in Paulding County. That is an increase of 19,052 since we ended the November, or actually the December 2018 election. We are growing. I have stood here before and tell you, you see it every day, this county is growing. And with growth comes change, and nobody likes change. And I say that because we are seeing most of our growth, as you all know, on the eastern side of this county, from the Cobb County line, north of the Cedar Crest area, all the way down to the Douglas County line in the southern part of the county. And that's where we're seeing a lot of our voter population. It was necessary for us to do something to accommodate the voters in that area, so we decided that we would add some polling locations, change some precincts to make those additions, and that's what we have come up with. We are currently working on these changes. We are increasing from 12 precincts to 17, and we are adding back two additional early voting locations. We will always early vote here at the Watson Complex, and we are adding Burnt Hickory Park to service the north part of the county, and the Diane Wright Innovation Center to accommodate the southern portion of the county. When we are questioned about withdrawing from the schools, I wanted to let everyone know that it is a situation to where, number one, it's a safety concern for our students that attend those schools. I have met with our school superintendent, and we don't have an issue in November because school is not in session. However, we do have an issue in May when the primary is set and it's the last week of school. It's hard for the school system to call school on that day. We also have runoff elections now off of the November election, and those are conducted in December, and school is in session when that is conducted. So we felt that it was best for us to begin withdrawing from the schools and finding locations in our community that people will not be affected, especially our kids. So we have, we were originally, when we had our 12 precincts, we were in eight schools. We are now in four, and one of those does not have any children. Three are housed with students, and one is the Diane Wright Innovation Center. We are trying to acclimate our voters to this change before the 2020 election year happens. That is why we made the decision to do this, because 2020 is not a time you want to open the gates and start changing polling locations. It wouldn't be anything that I would even consider doing. But we wanted to get them acclimated because we have the opportunity with a county-wide election this November for the voters to know where the new polling location will be. We are expecting huge turnouts in 2020. We saw a 62% turnout in November. I think we will start leaning more towards a 65% to 70%. I would love nothing more to see, a 100%, but I don't think I'll ever see that, but hopefully we could get to those numbers. People are voting, people are involved, and they are concerned, and they should be. So I'm excited to see those numbers continually to go up. So with that being said, we are moving forward. We are still in the discussions of our polling locations. We are excited about those. We are thankful for the people who have allowed us to come into their communities and use their facilities, and we think it's going to be a better opportunity for our voters not to have to wait for a very long time when they go to cast their vote. So we will be notifying the voters once everything is finalized of their polling location change. They will be getting a precinct card. So we are excited about this. We have worked very hard on this. This is not something that happens overnight. We have literally been working on this since July. We were here till 10:30 last night trying to get some things finalized. So a lot of work goes into changing this, and it's not something we enjoy doing, but it's something that we have to do to make sure that our voters are getting the best treatment that they can, that they are not having to be inconvenienced by waiting for three or four hours in line because of the way that our county is growing. We are at a 71% ratio to our population with registered voters, and I'm very proud to stand here and say that. I want to talk about something I'm very excited about, and that's our new voting system. I got the word on Tuesday that our system will be delivered tomorrow. So we will actually get to have it here in our possession, start working with it, start training on it. We will be using the system, of course. We have been selected as a pilot county for the state, one of six. We are the largest. There will be a lot of eyes on us and a lot of people coming in and out to visit to see the system, and we're excited about that. So we will be also discussing some town hall meetings to get this into the community. So I may be reaching out to the commissioners to join me in your community to demonstrate the system. But there again, it's going to be a system that we feel is very voter-friendly. It is voter-auditable, they can see who they have cast their vote for. They're given an opportunity twice to check their selections on the screen. Once they print their ballot, they have another opportunity to make sure they have selected who they so choose to vote for. They deposit it into the scanner, and their vote is cast. So it is a whole lot easier to use than the system we have previously been using, and the tabulation process and the reporting process will be a whole lot easier and quicker. I know most of you anxiously await those results on election night when your name's on the ballot, so instead of uploading 400 cards, we will now be uploading maybe 20. So we'll get our results out quicker and just hopefully not be so stressed with elections on election nights. So that's the good news I want to bring to all of you, and if you have any questions, please let me know. Any comments, please let me know, but I just appreciate the opportunity to serve. And we are ready to go into the November 2019 elections and then go fast-forward into 2020, and that's what we'll be doing for the next year and a half. So thank you again for letting me speak, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer those.
Well, I'll make a comment. With a governor who's the previous Secretary of State and has a lot of interaction with you and your group downstairs, I know they know what they're doing when they pick the largest county for a pilot, and so I'm excited to hear about that, and I know that it's in good hands. Two questions for you. Do you have an approximate date when the new precinct locations will be finalized?
That will be voted upon on Monday in a special Cobb meeting with the Board of Elections.
And do you know how long after that the precinct information will be updated on the Secretary of State, my voter page site?
Once we have the board votes on this, we will tell the Secretary of State to turn on that system for us. All that will be updated, and voters should be able to go in and see their new precincts by the end of next week.
Wonderful. Thanks.
Thank you, Deidra. I remember when the voting percentage was in the 50s, and now you say 71%, so kudos, great. I know it makes all of us proud to have that percentage. And how does that relate, or how does that measure to other counties? Is that on the high, or are we still low?
With the voter-to-population ratio, I think we have an above-average one because people choose to live here in Paulding because it is one of the greatest counties in the state, and they are more tuned in to voting and the issues that are going on now. So I do think that our voter-to-population ratio is high because we are a residential community, and those people are. So I'm proud that our voters have done that. A very small percentage, which you have to think, there's a lot of people that live in this county that's not of age to vote. So that percentage is high. The others just simply don't want to be registered, or they're ineligible to be a registered voter. So I think we have a really good ratio.
We'll take this opportunity just to thank you and your team and your board for all the work you do. I've been educated over the last few years, and you're so much more involved than I ever imagined.
Thank you. Thank you all for your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Deidra.
And we have Ms. Amy Tissock here from Comprehensive Program Services. Always glad to get updated from you, Amy, and thanks for your time this morning.
Absolutely. Thank you.[1521.65][1521.65](Pause) Sorry. All right, well, while she's loading up the PowerPoint, things are going very well out at the site. If you've been on the JAL website, you can see there's progress going on, on the outside. You can't, you know, unfortunately, see real-time progress on the inside, but I have been posting photos, kind of progress photos through the beginning of the project. So when you go on the JAL website, you can go ahead and take a look at those, and as we go ahead progressing, I'll upload some more photos for you. So as you can see, progress right now, we're getting some curb in, we're getting GAB stone in for the drives and the parking lots. So again, a lot of good progress on the outside. The weather, again, is agreeing with us, which is great, so it's leading to some good progress. You'll also see out there light poles going up, so you'll have some added security at night around the site. Project budget update, there has been, since the last meeting, no changes. You'll see that the overall total budget, including all of the change orders that have been approved to date, we're still at $70,626,000. Construction contingency is currently just above $500,000. So not much of a change with that. We're in good shape for contingency where we are with the project. Upcoming and under-review items, there's a couple change orders that we are currently reviewing and will be coordinating with Scott on this. We do intend to try to get these on the agenda for the next meeting, which I believe is October 8th. Change order number five includes additional general conditions, demucking costs. Again, that's, when you look at those numbers, they are significant, so we've been reviewing these actually quite a while before, and vet through them before we even take them to Scott to coordinate and review. Change order number six, $97,722. This includes some flooring revisions. And the reason why we made these revisions, we went with a LVT instead of a VCT product. That is, not only is it more durable, it's less maintenance costs for the sheriff's office, so we definitely feel that was a good move to go with that product and change up that material. Miscellaneous changes to improve functionality and operations in the JAL and LEC. I think I mentioned before at some meetings, it's extremely hard for an owner to really understand how they're going to operate the facility until it really starts getting built and they really start thinking through day-to-day operations. So these miscellaneous changes are not unexpected. It definitely is an improvement to the sheriff's office operations, so. Last item, and I think that's later on the agenda as well, to approve the water meter cost from the county stock, and the water meter would be installed by the subcontractor for Turner. Projected budget through completion, the only change to this since the last updated meeting, we have increased, or actually decreased a little bit, the ad services for Wakefield-Beesley under the architecture-engineering contract. That is later on the agenda to be approved for their change orders in the amount of $68,000. So that's the only change that you'll see. As far as... As far as the projected budget, we are still projecting that we are at 72.8 and that includes additional funding for, we already have the numbers included for the change orders that I mentioned a couple of slides ago. So, those costs are already factored into this number as well as an increase in FFNE numbers based on where we are with the overall budget. And then progress, again, you'll see site work evolving. Light poles are being installed. At visitation, you'll see the structure going up, roofing going up very soon and then we'll start the interior fit-out, drywall and interior finishes on that. LEC, ceiling grids, lights, kind of more of all the pretty aesthetics you'll see being completed at this time. Support, kind of the same thing. It'll follow the ceiling grids, lights, painting, door installation and then in housing, just finishing up ceilings, painting, again, fitting out those areas. And then some progress photos. See, this is a photo of a typical day room and control room. You'll see that, the block and the framing for the control room windows, those should be installed in the next couple of weeks. LEC, you'll see a lot of the, again, a lot of the drywall, interior finishes starting to be installed. Painting going on. You'll see in the next month, flooring starting to be installed and a lot of the finishes in the secure areas are sealed concrete. So, we'll see that starting here in the next several weeks to get those cleaned up and sealed. Tile is starting to be installed in the more administrative-type restrooms and then you'll see on the right-hand side, one of the electrical panels for the law enforcement center installed. Schedule update, we are still looking at a mid-December date for the housing substantial completion. Some of the other areas fall in before that, but we're still on track for that mid-December time period. Final completion, we're looking at February 20th. The next several months, you'll probably see me up here a lot. We're going to have a lot of FFNE items coming before you for approval. So, these are things, furnitures, any type of equipment. The cabling is started in the building. We have the AV RFP out right now for bid and we should be getting those back in a couple of weeks. So, I hope to have something for you for the next agenda for recommendation on that. And that's it. Any questions?
I forgot what FFE is, furniture? What else?
Furniture, fixtures and equipment. It's all the pretty things you get to see.
We're also pleased to have President, two Presidents here, Tim Collins with Turner, raise your hand, Tim, and Eric, I know he wants to be introduced, don't you, Eric? Eric Johnson, President of Comprehensive Program Services. Just an interest I would have is, you know, the economy's good and there's so much construction going on. How does that affect your ability to get subs or has it affected you?
And I think, Tim, from the construction side can surely attest, but it's hard. You know, we did, for an example, we put the AV RFP out to bid for the first time about a month and a half ago and we got zero bids. And then I think Joe Hagler reached out to a couple of them to see kind of what the issue was and basically they didn't have time. So, it's definitely, you know, a factor these days to get people interested in projects. But, you know, we feel confident that this next round, and it fell around Labor Day as well, so that didn't, you know, didn't help. I think people just ran out of time, but I think, you know, with this next round for the AV bids, we'll get sufficient numbers back. But overall, it's harder, you know, than it was five, 10 years ago to get participation from subs because they are so busy.
Other questions, comments? Good report, Amy, as always. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
We don't have anyone that signed up for agenda items, public participation. We have to improve on our agenda here to get more participation, I guess. Thanks for laughing, Tabitha. Under consent agenda, we have one, which is just discuss action to authorize the chairman to sign a quitclaim deed to swap the right-of-way along Pine Ridge Lane to D.R. Horton's post four. And I'd ask at this time if anybody would like to move that to the regular agenda. Okay, we'll leave it where it is. We have no old business under new business. Quite a lineup here. We'll get after it. New business number one is discuss action to adopt the FY 2019 budget amendments. Ms. Pollard, turn to report.
Good morning, one more time. Fiscal year 2019 amended budget. First, I want to explain why we have 2019 amended budget up on the, for adoption, when we're actually in 2020. So, 2019, we finished June 30th. It's not just made up of the general fund. That's what our focus is most of the time because that's where our primary funding comes from. But, we have about 20 funds. So, we have a lot of funds that are held with constitutional officers and those constitutional officers, we don't have their, we don't keep their accounts. They keep them. And then at the end of the year, they send them over, but you have a beginning budget. So, when you adopted the 2020 budget, you adopted a budget for those funds and you have, then once the year's over, you have to amend that budget so that it matches with what actually went, occurred, the transactions that occurred within the 2019 year. So, we don't have that until July. So, we hold all of the general fund budget. Those are things that have taken place throughout the year, items that have been on the agenda that cost money, that wasn't in the original budget, that you approved and we consolidate all of those and put them into one item. So, to cover this, first, I'm going to talk about what, how we ended the year because that's what most want to know. So, if you, I have some handouts in the back and each of you should have one that looks like what's on the screen. And if you will go to, my focus is going to be on the general fund, again, because that's where the funding for general operations of county government are. So, if you'll turn to page six of that handout. Let's see, I'll make this bigger. This is a list of all the departments and it's got your original budget, your revised budget, so your original budget, and then the final budget is the budget including the amendments. And then you have your 2019 actual and then you have the actual from 2018. But for the sake of time and to keep this short, I'm going to increase this so everybody can see and I'll just have to tell you what those headings are. So, this first column is your original budget. This is your expenditures. So, our original expenditures were budgeted at $71 million. The revised expenditures are 73.5 million and your actual expenditures were 68.2 million. So, if you go down to the bottom, your excess, so how did you end the year with an excess $7.2 million? We had obligations. So, during the year, we issue purchase orders, we obligate funds and we don't spend all of those funds. Well, at June 30th, those obligations don't just go away. The vendor's still working on them. And we had $8.6 million in obligations for the 2019 year. So, if we had spent that $8.6 million, you would have $1.4 million use of fund balance is what you would have used. Does that make sense? And the budget, the original budget had a plan to use $1.9 million. So, now that, unless you have any questions, I'll go to the specific budget amendments that are before you and the reasons for them. Another handout that you have is, let me make that bigger. Okay, these are the budget amendments that are actually before you. So, this lists all the funds across the top. General fund, FIRE, special revenue, E911, your special courts, those are your constitutional officer funds, solid waste. Enterprise funds are, they're there, but they're a flexible budget because if you don't have the funds, you can't spend the money. They operate like a business. Your SPOLOST funds, your debt service has a tax and your CIP funds, those are primarily, this one is the jail fund, is basically what we're funding out of this with a few other construction projects, but not, not a lot. Now, on the next page, you have the expenditures. Well, I'm sorry, let me go back to your revenues increase. So, I didn't have a prior year fund balance budget in this amended portion because you didn't use any of fund balance. So, I reduced that and increased some of the revenues to better reflect what was actually received. So, the property tax didn't change. The other tax, which is primarily your lost, your title of lorm tax and the insurance premium tax, those were all taxes that increased. So, that increased that number a little bit. Licenses and permits, that number didn't change. Intergovernmental, those are funds that are received for, from federal or state for some of the operations. Primarily, that's your Elmeg funding for the year. Charges for service had a small increase. Funds and forfeitures didn't increase. Investment income has increased and the contributions of miscellaneous had relatively no change. On the expenditure side of things, on the expenditure side of things, the reasons for department budgets to change. Departments are required to work within their budget and they do unless there's something that's asked of them or they have to make a purchase for something that maybe you approve and it's, this consolidation will include some of those amendments. But, for the most part, they are a result of your leave buyback. So, we have leave buyback. County employees are allowed to sell back 60 hours of leave and that amount is budgeted in one line item instead of by department. And then when it's expensed, when that leave is sold back, it's charged to the department that actually incurred the expense. So, this reallocates that. Often, in large departments, you'll have vacancies that will not require you to move money around like that, but in a small department, you may have, you don't have any vacancies and they feel, I mean, the budget's an actual number. So, when you have more come out in a small department, you can't absorb that anywhere. So, this does contain some adjustments for that. Purchase orders from 2019, I mean, from, these were purchase orders from 2018 that moved into 2019. So, again, as I mentioned earlier, we had 8.6 million in purchase orders for going into 2020. We had very close to that amount coming out of 2018 going into 2019. So, this approves the budget for those. And DOT has, they have some federal funding that we're not really certain of at the beginning of the year and sometimes those change throughout the year and we'll have to make adjustments. We also have a transfer of $1.5 million that was made to the water system. That was to take care, we've talked about this for years, but when the water system actually moved, it became time to make that transfer. The GSP post, that building was originally constructed with water and sewer enterprise funds and it was converted several years ago from that purpose to the GSP. So, we repaid them for that building. Then we had some water lines that were completed this year and you had agreed to do up to $500,000 a year for those water lines. Well, the water system expended those funds and this is to repay them for, reimburse them for those funds from general fund that were paid. Without getting very specific in the details, that's pretty much the gist of why these amendments are necessary. So, I hope I haven't been very, too confusing. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to entertain those.
I think you need to hand out a test.
Okay.
All right. Good job. Number two, new business is discuss action to adopt Resolution 19-29 authorizing the issuance of Series 2019 Industrial Building Authority taxable revenue bonds in the amount not to exceed $5,750,000 to refund the 2011 Industrial Building Authority outstanding bonds. And along with our finance director, we have in the house today, Mr. Clifford Bucky Kimsey, who I think was linebacker at the University of Georgia. So, happy to have him here to represent Raymond James, who has helped us with these bonds.
These bonds were originally issued in 2011. There were two Series, 2011A and 2011B and occasionally the opportunity presents itself for us to refinance those bonds and save some interest funding. So, that's what's happened in this case. There is mechanism as to an interest that you want to be, an amount that you want to be able to earn before you'll do that and we have reached that. And the numbers that I have probably have changed. So, Bucky's going to talk to you about how much, what potential savings we have in refinancing. And that fund, I guess that terminology is very confusing. So, bonds are sold in very small increments and when those bonds are sold, you can't just refinance them like you do your house. We have to actually borrow the money to pay off those bonds so that, and it's called refunding. And so, we'll pay those off and this will be another issue. But, the entire issue that we're looking at for this 20, this issue in 2019 will be to refund those existing 2011 bonds.
Tabitha knows more about this than I do, I can assure you. She knows everything about all the financing that y'all do up here. And before I get started with this, I just want to say that we were honored to finance the detention center a number of years ago as well. And my recollection is that we had to have a referendum on that and I think it passed overwhelmingly. So, I think there was a lot of support for, in the community for that. But, we obviously appreciate being involved in that transaction. I have to admit, I do not know what demucking is. I've got an idea, but I don't know if we financed it or not, but whatever, whatever. Now, what we've been talking about was refunding or refinancing. Refunding is just a fancy word for refinancing bonds and we only do that when the bonds can be called away from their owners and if interest rates cooperate with us and it makes sense financially to do it, if it makes good finance, and it makes sense financially to do it, if it makes, makes good sense to do it. And in our case, what we talked about just recently when we were here in June, the number was 500, the savings was $598,000. The savings today, based on current information that we have, is $761,000. Now, interest rates in our, our business change every day, and y'all have probably been reading about things that have occurred just here recently. The Federal Open Market Committee met yesterday, or they met Tuesday and Wednesday, but they, they went ahead and lowered interest rates by 25 basis points or a quarter of 1%. Now, there's 10 people that vote on that. Seven of them voted to reduce the rates by 25 basis points, a quarter of a percent. Two people didn't want to change them at all, and one person wanted to do 50, 50 basis points or half of a percent. So they're not in, completely in tune with each other, but the significance of this is that interest rates, when they go down, the amount of savings goes up when you refinance those bonds. And so it is a, it, we believe it makes economic sense to do this. The number, 761,000 is, is a pretty, is a, is a strong number, particularly in, in view of the 598 that we had, and 598 was a good number. If we have a present value savings above 3%, we think it makes sense to refinance bonds. And previously, it was 9.1%. On this now, it's 13%. It's 13% present value savings, which is just a heck of a lot of money. The whole, the bit, the principal amount is not anywhere near as big as a lot of the transactions that we've done here with y'all, but it's just as important as any of the transactions that we've done. And so I'll be happy to try to answer any questions if anybody, if anybody has any.
Are pretty quiet today.
That suits me.
Thanks so much, Bucky, for taking the time to drive all the way out here and, and give us an update. So we'll move on to number three. Discuss action to approve the Title VI Plan for Georgia Department of Transportation Intermodal Division.
This is, I'm presenting this item only because we have a little bit of federal funding attached to this. So this is the 5311 funds that we received from the state in the amount of $58,000. We have a matching that's 50%, so we have a $116,000 requirement for that, that service. One of the things DOT has required us to do is to put in place a Title VI, which is a non discriminatory, so it basically says what, what discrimination is, and it says how we're going to handle discrimination and what we're going to do with it in the event that it occurs. So already on our buses, we had forms, everything was available to assure the, the participants that we do not discriminate, but the state wanted it all in one central location as to what our policies and procedures were. So that's basically what this does. It says that we're going to, that we're going to post the procedures on the buses, that there is a contact in the event that discrimination occurs or somebody feels that they've been discriminated against. There is how that process is investigated and then what's the remedy. And it also talks about language, so if you have different languages, we have to have it posted on the primary languages that are spoken in, in Paulding. So basically, that's all it is. It just puts what we're already doing into written format for the state.
So this came about in 1964, and we're just now being asked to put this in writing?
Yes, and it was quite a lengthy book she had to put together, reports she had to put together.
Yeah, it was a good three hours' worth of reading. Questions, comments? All right. Number four is discuss action to approve a lease extension for a cell tower in Post 1.
Currently, Paulding County has about 10 land leases with cell tower companies, and they all want long-term leases. So they want to be able to go back to the T-Mobile, AT&amp;T, Verizon and have a lease for a cell tower that has quite a bit of time because the equipment's expensive. So Crown Castle has approached us for a lease extension, and this lease is still not up for a couple of years, but they're asking to extend it for, I believe, 25, 25 additional We contracted with Georgia Municipal Association with a cell tower expert, if you will, to negotiate this lease for us because there are so many moving pieces. So one, it's a 25-year lease. So what do we, what will the market be doing in 25 years? I have no idea what a cell tower, what the market will be. And they do, and what's generally given for, what's a land lease worth? So how much should that land lease be? And then revenue share, and how, how do you deal with those tenants? And they, he, we dealt with Ryan Fender. He does have expertise in, in dealing with each of these issues. So what they've brought back to us is an increased rent. So the rent went from 22,000 to 30,000 annually, a signing bonus of 15,000, so there's 15,000 due to Paulding just for signing, and a 25% revenue share, which the existing lease did not have 25% revenue share. And they have already signed AT&amp;T, so that 25% is already got some funding being generated for it as a result. And it does include an escalator. It increases 15% every five years, but that was in the original lease as well. So it seems there's only improvements for this lease.
When did you say the current lease expires?
The current lease expires, I believe, in 2022 or 2023. I'd have to look back to see for sure.
That's fine, thank you. Thank you, Tabitha, for all those good reports. Number five is discuss action to approve Change Order Number 1 in the amount of $68,000 for architectural services related to owner requested revisions. This will be an increase to the existing contract amount of $3,665,000 dated June 19, 2017 with Wakefield Beasley and Associates. The funding is available from within the bond proceeds for the county, the Paulding County Adult Detention and Law Enforcement Center, of course, in Post 2, and Mr. Scott Green's going to report.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. If it was all we did every day, we could not manage a project of this size. So I appreciate the fact that we have a professional team available to us to, to handle the day-to-day decisions. Not only are they experienced in this type of work, but they've handled very large projects, including the law enforcement type centers all over Georgia, I know at least. We also have the architect, Principal Architect Karen Sickner here with us if there's any questions, and then Amy, of course, with any details you need. I just wanted to add a couple of comments. I hope you've read the backup and it's sufficient for the most part. Just to review a couple of things that started before the current administration, some of the Commissioners took office. We did have a lot of changes early on, particularly with the civil site work in trying to adjust the site and minimize the amount of trees we had to take out. That was important to the city as far as sort of camouflaging the building a little bit and keeping the greenery we had acquired to the north of us as much as possible. Also preparing the architectural visuals for the city to approve the site, the 3D fly-around and things like that. Those were things that were not anticipated when the architect prepared the proposal, and we did ask them to change a lot of things along the way. And some of these are very good to find a cost effective, cost effective solution to, to things like the visitation center sited on some old unsuitable soils. We were looking at 100,000 or more to, to dig up old soils and replace them with good, good material and rock and, or structural improvements. And we were able to move that facility, I think it was about a $7,000 change as far as the design, but then we saved basically $93,000 in the process. So there's important reasons why we do go through these changes to benefit the overall project, to improve it as we go along, as, as was mentioned before. Sheriff and, and I and staff appreciate this professional team we have. It takes a lot of the pressure off us day to day. I know the sheriff has more important things to do than to look at foundations and structural work and, and worry about paint colors and furnishings and things like that. So that's, that's what we hire CPS to do for us and, as well as the architect. Tim Collins is also here. You introduced him earlier, managing Turner Construction. And any of them are available for questions if you have them. If any of you have not yet toured the facility lately, I'd encourage you to, to get on the calendar or contact Colonel Hunter. They do walkthroughs every, every Thursday. This particular day it was today, so that might not work out. But in, on a future Tuesday or something like that, please, please call so you can get inside before everything's really closed down. And I think you'll appreciate the magnitude and the impressive, impressive work going on in there to deliver this project. Other than that, I'll let you all ask any questions if you have any for myself or, or Amy. We're here to handle that. In particular, right now, we're asking for $68,000 for the types of changes that we've encountered so far and, and just a little bit that we might have. I think we had projected maybe 100,000 overall for this project through the end, but right now, we're just asking for approval for $68,000. Thank you.
Thank you. You notice the visitation center is coming out of the ground.
It is, yeah. We're excited, yeah. You'll see the, the structure going up again. The roof will come up a couple of weeks, and then that'll be followed by the exterior sheathing and then start the interior work. So yes, we're, we are glad to be over that hurdle.
And then there's another with the law enforcement center here. Number six, discuss action to approve funding in the amount of 28,000 for equipment, materials, and labor to install the Adult Detention and Law Enforcement Center Water Meter Assembly. The county will purchase the meter and Turner Construction will provide other materials and labor through their subcontractors. Funding is available from within the bond proceeds for the program. So this is what Amy talked about before. Any, any other briefing?
Just to add, we did show on the slides that it would be part of, I think, Change Order 6, but we went ahead and broke that out to go ahead and get this to you today. We have actually ordered a meter through the water system, so they'll provide that. The part that will actually be contractor effort is about $18,000 of that amount. So there will be, this will be rolled into a future change order, but we would like you to go ahead and approve the funding for it, and then we'll bring the, the full change order to you on the next available meeting. Are there any questions? Amy, again, is here to answer. Thank you.
I know Commissioner Hart really appreciates all the detailed drawings. He said he studied these last night.
If you could help me, I probably understand that because I'm not sure I do. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks much, Scott and Amy. Number seven is authorize the Chairman to approve and execute the application of the Georgia Department of Transportation FY 2020 Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant, L-MIG, in the amount of $2,287.64, with the required 30% match funds of $600,686.29 to be used to mill, patch, and re-surface county roads. Mr. George Jones.
Good morning. I'm sure Commissioner Hart spent as much time perusing over this material as he did the previous. So all that aside, you know, we're requesting the Board authorize the Chairman to accept and approve the L-MIG funding from GDOT. The L-MIG program itself is funded from the State Motor Field, Motor Field Tax Collection Program. The L-MIG grants each city and county receives as formula base, taking into account the county's population, road mileage compared to the entire state of Georgia's population and road mileage. Paulding County, based on this year's formula amount, will receive $22,287.64 in L-MIG funding. By law, the county is required to provide a 30% match for this funding, which is $600,686.29. As the Chairman stated, we plan on using this L-MIG for the paving of roadways in the county. Our match funds are going to come out of the General Fund, which we had budgeted for. To receive the funds, we are provide, we are required to complete an application containing the work to be accomplished, a project list, cost estimate, and an anticipated debt let date to GDOT. We're not held to or committed to this list. We can change, omit, add roads provided that we let GDOT know of any of these changes. As the Chairman is committed to, as basically we're asking the Chairman to obligate the county to provide the match funds over $600,000, we felt it was important to have Board approval for this measure. The L-MIG program, I believe, is very, it's a very beneficial program to this county. You know, it provides, like I said, the $2 million, and each year, we typically pave, our roadway paving program, the amount of money spent is, is well in excess of $2 million. So we're respectfully requesting that the Board approve this.
Just so you know, I do read it. Don't you have about seven, seven different roads that are listed in here?
Yes, sir.
Can you?
Yeah, we can go over those roads.
I was thankful to see two or three of them.
Davis Mill Road, Garmin Road, Wall Road, Mount Mariah Road, Nebo Road, Waters Road, and Hughes Road. And again, you know, this list is for GDOT, and we're going to come back whenever we do let a contract and officially show this to you again, but like I said, these roads can be changed. I don't anticipate them changing out, but we just have to provide the list now for GDOT.
Just don't mention a SPOLOST in this agenda item. So it just comes out of your DOT budget?
Yes, sir. We requested this year to put this in General Fund, the match would be General Funds. When we let out paving contracts, we'll, we'll end up using some SPOLOST funding for, you know, all the paving that goes on, but this portion right now, we're just, you know, allocating General Funds towards the GDOT match.
Other questions? Number eight is also yours, George. Discuss action to adopt Ordinance 19-05, creating provisions regulating the placement of small cell facilities, antennas, and associated poles on county right-of-way. It's consistent with the Georgia Streamlining Wireless Facilities and Antenna Act. That's OCGA Title 36, Chapter 66(c). It's all yours.
Yeah, the Georgia Streamlining Wireless Facilities and, and Antennas Act, otherwise known as SWFAA, does not really flow off the tongue well, so I'm just going to keep using the term SWFAA. Okay, basically allows small cell devices, associated equipment, and poles to be placed on the county's and municipalities' right-of-ways. Basically, the law provides a process where providers can deploy small cell wireless devices on new and existing poles on the right-of-way. I kind of want to go about how we got to this point because we didn't just develop an ordinance just to develop an ordinance, but why do we need the ordinance? A small cell installation consists of radio equipment and antennas that can be placed on structures, like I said, on structures such as streetlights and utility poles. Small cells basically are wireless hotspots that fill in coverage gaps, increase network capacity, and extend service from larger cell towers. We use the term "small cells" to kind of differentiate from the large cell towers like the macro cells, which are like 400 feet tall. We're talking poles that are 50 foot height max with small cells. Why did this law come about? Why do we need this ordinance? The way we communicate, send and receive information has changed dramatically, you know, over the past 20 years, returning increasingly to wireless networks and mobile technology. AT&amp;T provided us information earlier this year that their data usage has increased by 360,000% since 2007. As this trend continues, you know, providers are expanding the ways in which they can satisfy the need to provide and accommodate this data usage for their customers, and that's how this law came into effect. The law as drafted, you know, takes into account a majority of factors, however, there's some items not addressed, particularly concerning aesthetics and appearances and our ability to regulate the equipment on the right-of-way in terms of those appearances. To protect the cities and counties from the, with the effects of the law, the ACCG and the GMA developed a draft ordinance to provide government entities controls on aesthetic appearances consistent with the law. You know, we've had some inquiries from various companies regarding the placement of small cells on the right-of-way already. the right-of-way already. And we could possibly receive an influx of permits once this law takes effect on October 1st this year. You know, to protect the right-of-way, I, I recommend that we pass, you know, this ordinance to give us the controls to, inconsistent with law, for aesthetic controls. As part of this, the request for this small cell ordinance is the ordinance itself and the aesthetic standards for all items on the right-of-way. Per the SWFAA and the Federal Communications Commission, we're not able to just single out small cell providers in terms of aesthetics. We have to make that applicable to all utilities within the right-of-way. So that's the aesthetics insert along with the small cell ordinance. I want to say we do have the ability to go back and, you know, revise this in the future as needed. However, I think this is a good start to basically get us ready for this October 1st deadline. And I'd like to thank Jason Phillips for his work on this. We kind of asked him to do a lot at the last moment, and our staff, engineering staff, really worked hard on this. So, and hopefully I can answer any questions you may have.
So just for clarification, this doesn't grant anyone permission to put that up. That's through the act that was passed by the General Assembly.
Yes, sir. Yeah, this, and basically, the way the law is written, you know, they still have to come forward to us, provide us their plans, show where they're going to put it. They can't just go do whatever they want. However, you know, we, we can't just deny folks, you know, these providers. We can't say, no, you can't put it on there. They can put facilities out there, consistent with the law.
And, and those, the equipment that goes there, that, that rides or extends their own network, it doesn't ride any network that the county maintains. Is that correct?
No, sir. It is, like I said, it's their own network. You know, they can place it on, you know, utility poles, possibly our poles, if we have any out there. But it is just for their networks.
Okay. Thank you. What's the size of them?
I believe the way the law and our ordinance is constructed, the poles can be 50-foot maximum height, and then you, you know, you have an antenna on top of it. But the, the boxes themselves, which will be mounted either on the ground or on the pole, I believe it's regulated to a 28 square foot, or 28 cubic foot measurement. So roughly three, three and a half by three and a half by three and a half.
Thank you so much, George.
Thank you.
Okay. New business number nine is discuss action to award a contract to provide a capital improvement program inspection services to Atkins North America in the amount of $372,682. This is Post 4, and Ms. Ashmore's going to report.
Let me clarify. We had a typo on, on, on this. This is primarily in Post 3. We have, we currently have Atkins inspection services on our Highway 92 waterline relocation. And we, as, as that, as the contractor is completing those services and, and things are winding down on that, we have other capital projects in that same area that are, that are starting up. And so we have, we are proposing to, and we had those construction inspection services undefined. With the knowledge that this, that Atkins has gained with 92, with the road construction, and with recommend, and with the positive reviews from other utilities in that area of their inspector, we are proposing a contract for inspection services that, for East Hyrum Sewer and other capital improvement projects. So that would provide us the opportunity to use this inspector, not only on East Hyrum, but on the copper mine expansion, as well as have some county eyes on the Ridge Road sewer improvements. The, this would be a full-time inspector. It's an hourly rate contract for those inspection services. And that hourly rate includes all costs, vehicles, cell phones. There are no additional costs to, to be charged to the county. It does have, should we find that we do not need that inspector any longer, then we, we, there is the ability to cancel the contract with, with 15 days' notice. At this point, we had the funding, this funding of $372,682 is expected to be able to provide for services through February 2021, so about 15 months. Oh, sorry, that's not right. 18 months. And, and the payment, the funds would be paid from the renewal and, and extension fund, which is consistent with our capital improvement program.
Questions, comments? Did a great job. That's the conclusion of our regular business. We have no one who's signed up for non-agenda items. I'd like to thank Bucky and Amy and Tim and Eric again for being here and staying throughout the meeting. We will vote tonight at 7:00, 8:00, 7:00 PM on these different items. And I'd also like to thank my wife for being here. She's in the back, and I think she's stayed awake for 90% of this. We do have a requirement to go into executive session.
You're going to pay for that.
No comment. We have the requirement for executive session for real estate and potential litigation. So I would entertain a motion that we go into executive session.
I'll make the motion that we go for those purposes.
We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kaker. All those who favor, say aye. We're adjourned to executive session.